Ms. Nathan. Ms. Juan. Ms. Lahano. Ms. Lahano. Mr. Hada.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. O'Chapenty.
Yeah.
Mrs. Ainge Garrett.
Here.
And Ms. Salahu Dean.
Here, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we get a flag? Okay, so I'll just go ahead and lead all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Hey. Dr. Deloria, are there any changes to the agenda?
Are no changes, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve?
No, no. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving on to the next item, approval of the minutes unless there are any changes. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board met in closed session, we have nothing to report out, no action was taken. And now moving on to recogn- recogn- recognitions and commendations. The Student of Month from Thornton High School, and I will turn it over to the principal of the school, Mr. Jenny Morenko.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to see you all. It's an honor to present our Student of the Month. Thanks for having us. The Jefferson Union High School District Student of the Month program is designed to recognize the many outstanding achievements within school and in the community of the students in our district. Selected by their teachers and administrators, the Student of the Month exemplifies the degree of academic achievement, leadership, and community consciousness we would like to see in all of our students. Since only five of the roughly 4,200 students in our district received this recognition, being chosen as Student of the Month is quite an honor. Tonight, we will be recognizing the 2019 through 2020 April Student of the Month. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Natalia Bonilla, a senior at Thornton High School. Natalia is Mexican and Salvadorian descent. Natalia's great-grandmother came to the United States from Guadalajara, Mexico, and her dad's mom came here from El Salvador. Natalia does not speak much Spanish, as her mom does not speak fluently, but her grandma speaks Spanish pretty well, although she speaks English at home. Natalia was born in San Francisco, California, and has been raised in the Bay Area. Before attending Thornton High School, Natalia attended Terranova High School in her hometown of Pacifica. At Terranova, she started failing some of her classes. She realized that she lacked motivation and energy to match the demand of what school was handing her, and she did not have the support she needed during this time. Natalia really wanted to do better, but felt stuck on how to achieve this goal. Then it was discussed and decided that she would attend Thornton High School. Natalia needed a lot of credits when she came to Thornton, but transferring to Thornton has been a great change of pace for Natalia and helped motivate her to realize she can achieve her goals. When she stepped foot into Thornton, she was diligent in her work and has been able to stay laser-focused in class and on receiving and recovering her credits. Natalia consistently demonstrates an eagerness to learn new things and always has thought-provoking questions to bring classroom discussions. She always has a smile on her face and is very cheerful. Natalia exhibits empathy and is a determined young woman. Natalia has made positive changes at Thornton that have allowed her to feel and be successful. Since Natalia has been at Thornton, she has stood out. She's been at the top of her classes in regards to credits and has good attendance and was chosen as her homeroom's Classroom All-Star for the third quarter. She even managed to graduate early, as she did not let anything get in the way of earning her high school diploma. Natalia feels super lucky to have graduated just in time before the coronavirus lockdown occurred. In Natalia's free time, she enjoys hanging out with her family, friends, and boyfriend. Thornton has assisted Natalia in feeling prepared to move on to her future plans of going to college and is excited to see where things take her. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2019-2020 Jefferson Union High School District Student of the Month for April 2020, Ms. Natalia Bonilla.
Opening up for comments.
I wish I could see her. It's just another success story out of Thornton. I just want to thank, and of course, she sounds like a really remarkable young woman. And it's just another story of success out of Thornton. I just want to thank you, Dr. Morenko, and all of your staff for creating this environment for our students who, this might be their second, third, fourth chance, but they make it. And she's going to go to college, that's wonderful. And that she's, but I'm sure that it sounds like she's a very self-determined young woman and that, you know, she, she made her goal, she met her goal, and she's going to continue. Sounds like it to me. Thank you so much.
Wonderful story, and again, a worthy, very... The things where I'm just so proud of the work that we continue to do here, especially, you know, Thornton, again, school of second, third, fourth, and fifth chances, and continue to compress, and it's just awesome. Just wonderful work, Benny, please pass our thanks to the whole team over there.
Yeah, just echo what fellow board members saying, the great work that you're all doing and what can, what students contribute to. Congratulations to Natalia, and of course, overcoming, you know, the obstacles, different schools. A lot of us experienced that, but it's different for everybody. And glad she was able to finish up due time, and hopefully she comes back maybe next year to share some of her experiences with, in future years, with other students as well. Thanks.
And of course, I can speak to the firsthand support that Thornton has given to my family, so thank you all, for all of you too there, Dr. Morenko and all the staff and the teachers. And, you know, absolutely, you know, when the students are given all those extra chances, they're taking advantage of it, so thank you for being there to let them fall and, and taking advantage of opportunities so they can keep growing and learning, you know, and get those diplomas, so thank you so much. And just directly to her, Natalia, if there's a way, when this is all over, we could be in person, if she's still local, if she wants to come back in and get her certificate in person and get the picture with us, I'd love to do that. I'm so sorry that we can't honor her in person right now. Extremely grateful to her and the hard work that she's done and to her family and all the support that she's received from her school. And I also would just like to say, no student stands before us without being on their second, third, or fourth chance. Like there, every student that stands before us has failed in some way and has gotten back up, and this student is no different. So, you know, success is success, even if it's, it's, every success is different. And so I'm extremely proud of all the work that she's done, and I wish her all the best success. Any other comments? If not, we can move on. Thank you so much.
Just real quickly.
Oh, yes, please.
Again, thank you for the time. It's really an honor to present Natalia. She is a rock star, and I can't help but also give thanks to Terranova High School for already having planted the seed with just having her transition effectively to Thornton High School. And then I can't forget the teachers and staff, the counselors, the main office staff, the homeroom teachers, and our core class teachers. They have been remarkable in helping Natalia get to this point. So hats off to the Thornton staff. They're an incredible team to work with, and congratulations Natalia and family. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Communications and Board Report. Start with Trustee Mer.
Not much to report. You know, we're, spring break last week, that was a nice little break for a lot of people. You know, focus on things that, you know, needed more attention, focus on family, focus on, you know, focus on themselves, everyone kind of got in a good state of mind. So that was, you know, a nice little break for a lot of people. And we're back into the AHL now, today was day two. So we've officially gone through a rotation of it, where we've had, you know, our first, third, and fifth periods yesterday, and our second, fourth, and sixth periods today. And it ran pretty smoothly both days. I think that schedule has been pretty successful, and the more we work with it, I think we'll be able to, you know, maximize it and, you know, get the most out of it and try to make the most out of this opportunity.
Thank you. Trustee Nathan?
Hi, so we did have spring break last week, which was really nice. Even though we weren't really allowed to go outside, I was able to have like a great Easter with my family and ten virtual masks, which was really nice. And also, we started at-home learning this week, and I was really happy, I was able to see all my teachers and all the students again. And some of them actually came up to me saying how happy things were going, mainly because it was actually going pretty smoothly. And then a lot of teachers were saying how happy they were to see all their students again. So with like, at home learning, it's somewhat giving like a normalization to like this crazy time right now, so I'm actually really appreciative of it.
Thank you. Trustee O'Compo.
Just echoing off the last two trustees, another, just had, came back from spring break. We've gone through a full rotation of AHL, and, you know, it's nice to reconvene with my teachers and start moving forward in a direction of, of learning new material, you know, slowly but surely adapting over to this and just continuing on with the rest of the year. And also, official dates for AP exams have been posted as well. So a lot of the AP classes themselves are hosting more review times and just sort of going through and getting ready and prepping us for the AP exams coming up.
Thank you. Trustee Lee.
It's been fun to sort of, to be following all of the ASB accounts on Instagram. It's been really fun to actually see the, I mean, really, a wonderful job by the different ASBs, because, you know, to see the virtual spirit weeks that are occurring in the different Instagram stories. Very clever, I mean, just, you know, seeing Oceana and Terranova's this week with the, you know, like today, it was TikTok Tuesday for Oceana and Tiger King Tuesday for Terranova. And I know, you know, I mean, just clever stuff. And I, and it's fun to see all the, all the schools doing that, you know, Jefferson. And I missed Westmore's week last week or, or the week before, but I know it's, it's wonderful to see the students sharing the stuff that they, that they're doing to promote spirit in the various Instagram stories, whether it's students wearing their tiger stuff or sharing the TikTok videos that they've done, you know, or, you know, or anything else to promote unity and to just keep a sense of, of unity as well as some school spirit. So, you know, please take, me as student trustees in particular, take this back to your classmates and to your, and to your schools, because you guys are doing an amazing job trying to connect everybody virtually during this difficult time. So wonderful to see, and I'm having a lot of fun seeing the different stories, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Chapenty.
Yeah, just, you know, as eventful as the news has been, just following everything and kind of seeing how districts are responding to everything that we're going through in education at different speeds and same time, kind of together in figuring out how to advance distance learning, at-home learning, talking with students and parents to see, you know, what things are working, what things they're struggling with, and how we can support them. And just kind of proud about how, you know, even though we don't have the same answers at the same time, in terms of public education at the state level and, and local levels and even nationally, how we're all kind of learning from each other and learning, you know, new skills through all of this. So it's really empowering to see that, and then glad to see that we're supporting our communities through, you know, take-home lunches and just providing the best we can in terms of access and furthering the discussion about how we can, you know, provide equity in how we're teaching, you know, at a new pace, probably for, you know, foreseeable future right now, obviously, right? So just trying to keep up and inspired to hear a lot of the input from our students here today, of course, and yeah, looking forward to moving forward for the rest of the semester.
Thank you. Trustee Ainge Garrett.
So I just want to applaud and say I appreciate all the efforts that our district are doing to really making sure that our community is having the resource that they need in these times, you know, by doing, making sure all the students and all the families have meals and, and, you know, and all the schools asking families if there's any needs, and then we're stepping up to the plate and, you know, just really trying our best to, to get all the families what they need, you know, in this time of need. So I just want to appreciate that, and I just, again, every day that I am home, working from home and homeschooling my children, I appreciate our students, our staff, and our teachers more and more every day, having to do this on my own. It is definitely a tough job, so I thank you very much for all you do for us, everyone, so thank you.
Trustee Tahada.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, I just have to echo what everyone said. It, this is such a crazy time. Now I get to work from home, I'm fortunate, I still have a paycheck and benefits, but, you know, my family members don't, so it's, it's been rough. And, and my daughter is, we both say we're, we're really stressed, just in general. And how do we deal with that? And so I think that, you know, our, I, just everything I'm seeing in our district, we're, I'm so thankful we have everyone that we do. We're incredible. I'm going to say it, we're incredible. And, and that we really look out for the community as a whole. You know, I, I started taking a dance class with Ms. Mancell on Fridays, and, you know, it, it's actually, I'm trying to, self-care is really important. I've taken on a little meditation because I need it, and, and, and I, I just don't know that I've, I've had so many meetings. We've had so many Zoom meetings that are, you know, that we as a district have had and, and various calls just that we go on to keep informed with the county and, and with the School Board Association, the Seminole County School Board Association and our Superintendent of Schools. I mean, it's a lot of information. I'm trying not to watch too much TV, but sometimes you just have to zone out a little bit because it's a lot of stuff. And, but I, I also, I'm on social media a little bit, and just basically, I just like to see the uplifting things that a lot of our kids are doing and a lot of our teachers are doing, and, because it makes me happy. It makes me happy, and, you know. And so now my daughter has started her assignments, and, and there's now a little more routine, which I think she and I both need right now, because everything's just so unpredictable. But I just want to thank all of you for everything you're doing for all of us.
Thank you. And so, in a bit of business, we did have our Work Continues, and we had our two-by-two with Shasta, myself, Trustee Tahada, and Dr. Deloria had a Zoom meeting with Shasta yesterday, and that was informative and productive. I do want to say, and if maybe we can send something out, I listened to Assemblymember Ting's Town Hall today, which was mainly focused on the increase of acts of aggression and some hate crimes towards the Asian-American community through this crisis. And, you know, I mentioned before that long ago, we had signed a resolution in support of all students, but I think just reaffirming that and some sort of communication that, you know, I know that the Daily City Council is going to pass a resolution, and if we could just add a voice to that, that, you know, we don't tolerate any, any form or acts of aggression towards any members of our community, and it's really hard when we have leadership that keeps re-echoing that, and, you know, I can see how students can get confused on what terms to use and things like that, so just some, I think some information is coming out, and if we could just push it out, that would be great too, so that we can be a voice in that chain of voices that are saying, you know, we're not going to tolerate any form of hostility towards any member of our community, especially during a crisis, where we should all be pulling together. And then the other thing is that, I'm trying to figure out how to say this. That self, I just want everybody, everybody's been working so hard, and we just cannot be everything to everyone. Like, we try to be everything to everyone, but we can't. And I know that we are trying, we're doing so much, and that schools have constantly been put in place to, 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 to fill in the cracks of the failures of our local and federal governments and try to pick up the pieces, but this is going to be a marathon, it's not a sprint, and I just don't want any of you guys to burn out, because this is going to be ongoing. So in talking to all of my staff and teachers and administrators in the district, I am so proud of everything that we've been doing, but I would also say that, you know, there's limits to what we can do, and that I don't want anyone to wear themselves out trying to solve everything, because that's a failure of mine. Sometimes I just have to learn my own limits and to stand down a little bit, and so I don't want anyone else to burn out through this. I mean, we're doing, compared to other districts, we are doing, you know, so much above and beyond. I'm, I'm super impressed, so thank you for all that you do, and just remember that, you know, we need everybody here, and I don't want to lose anyone because of all the stuff that they're doing, so thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Deloria.
Thank you. So, you know, I've, I've been participating in Melissa Ambrose's staff mindfulness. Sometimes it doesn't work, and so I joined the students instead. And there was something that she said that reminded me of some research, that when, when we're anxious or depressed, one thing that can really help is by us helping others. I mean, we, what ends up happening is you help other people, but it actually helps yourself reduce your anxiety. And so there was, there are a number of things that I agree with President Salahu Dean. There's a number of things we're trying to do to fill in the gaps. We can't do everything, but Second Harvest, just an update, we started serving meals at two days a week, and we started out serving 200 families on each of those days. We're now up to over 1,000 families. So this past Saturday, it was 1,000 families, and I, that has a lot to do with the communications that are going out and the social media and people passing it around. And so that means a lot, you know, you know my background, so the thought of anyone going hungry, I have, I just can't handle that. I need to know people are being fed. So the, the problem is, is they're serving so many people, none of volunteers. So Adam QB is working with Reyna's right-hand Ruth to set up, we're going to try staff volunteers. And when Adam posted that today, I sent out an email to all staff, and I think, you know, in 15 minutes, all the slots were filled. And we didn't put additional dates yet, because this is a test, you want to see how it works with everybody coming in and doing their jobs. But I'm just really super proud that our staff, as busy as they are, are still finding time to get out and help. The other thing is, is we, we formed a committee, as I, I told you, I think yesterday, we formed a committee, and we're, we're calling it the JUHSD Student Assistance Program. And if you need another acronym, I know it doesn't sound so great, JSAP. But there are just so many families that need, and it's not like they need a lot, it's little things like turtle food or feminine products, or I can't find, I need, I can't buy my medication, or I have a $17 gas bill. And so we formed a committee, and what we're, we're doing a number of things, but this is going to be nice for the connections. We're going to be asking for staff volunteers, classified or certificated, to call on students. And Melissa's making a script that'll include some empathy and the kinds of questions to ask. And in this way, we hope to make a contact with everybody, every student in the district again. So another way of reaching out. And Kristin worked with Tina on setting up a GoFundMe account. We expect, it's live, but we're not sending out the staff communication until tomorrow, so I didn't, didn't want to start posting it on Facebook until I let all of our staff know. But I'll send you that communication out there tomorrow. And our Jefferson Council PTA has already committed to at least $250 to that account. So again, lots of different ways. Thank you to, to Ms. Tahada, because she had a contact. There is former students who can do shopping, pick up medication for either the elderly or people who can't get out of the house, so they go and do the shopping, and then they get reimbursed when they, when they drop off the goods. That's another section in our community that we need to be thinking about. So I'm just really proud that on top of taking care of kids and educating and feeding them and disinfecting and, you know, the van drivers driving packets and food to students, people are making time to do these extra things too, and I think that's actually good for us, as long as, as, as Kalima said, we're managing ourselves and not we're extending. So uber, uber proud of our district. I think we're leagues ahead of many.
Thank you. And now our report from AFT Local 1481, Ms. Casey.
Hello, everyone. That was, the first thing I was going to say as well, is that I'm super proud of everyone. You all look like you're frozen, so I don't know if you're hearing me okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. Just, people are doing so much and really trying to reach out to students and to community members, and I'm really proud of everyone. That was the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing was, I had my first AFT Zoom meeting, my executive board meeting today, so I'm a little zoomed out, but it was good. I was trying to make it a shorter meeting, but of course, we like to talk, so it went a little long. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, we have executive board and site rep nominations happening, so all the positions are open, and we're going to hopefully do, I don't know how we're going to do it, but some kind of voting in May. So April 27th is when nominations are due for all the positions. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And as school board members, we know nothing about being long-winded. Alright, can I turn it over to, or no, I'm not. I'm actually going to move on to the consent agenda, and unless there is any change or anyone wants to pull anything, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is our public comment. Last I heard, we didn't have any cards checking to see if that hasn't changed, Candace.
Hasn't changed. No blue cards.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our action items on the agenda. First up is Human Resources, application for a variable term waiver for Toni Kavary, and moving, turning it over to Toni Presta. Her name, Toni Ronkabali.
Thank you. Yeah, Terry Kabali. So this is something new, I don't have it up on my screen, so I'll just tell you. This is a new way of getting people authorized for EL, and so typically, we were able to just apply directly to the state, and it didn't need to go to the board, but we do now need to do this. Terry is taking classes, we assume that she will be right on track to get it, but in order for her to be credentialed for the fall, we do need this approved.
Thank you. I've been in the class, it's fantastic, was able to see all the clothes. Unless there are any questions, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the next...
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Business Services, item 15B1, Resolution Number 2019/20-12, Certified Results of the General Obligation Bond Election Held on March 3rd. Turning over, Ms. Van Rapporst.
Thank you, President Salah Houdin, and good evening, everyone. Resolution 2019/20-12 certifies the results of the bond election that was held on March 3rd, 2020. It was another Measure J. Keep getting that as our assigned measure letter. So the county has certified the results, and now if the board certifies it, we are finished with that process and can begin issuing the bonds for that amount.
Unless there is any questions, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve Resolution Number 2019/20-12, Certifying Results of General Obligation Bond Election, Election Held on March 3rd, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, great. Moving on to item 15B3, Resolution Number 2019/20-14, Maintenance Assessment District, Ms. Van Rapporst.
Um, so.
Or actually, did I skip one?
Yeah.
No, I did. Sorry. Resolution Number 2019/20-13, Designating a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you. So this is the second part of authorizing the funds for this March 3rd Measure J, would designate a Citizens Oversight Committee.
All right. And then, have we had issues finding members for that? For, do we, are the other bond committees full?
We still have openings, and we've been trying to solicit people. So if people are watching this and they're interested, definitely reach out. The information is on our website, and we are trying to get more members. We have some, but not a full oversight board. Awesome. Thank you.
You know, maybe that's something that April Hawkins can help Ms. Van Rapporst with, filling those positions.
All right. Unless there's any other questions, can I get a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2019/20-13 for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is 15.B-3, Resolution Number 2019/20-14, the Maintenance Assessment District, Ms. Van Rapporst.
Thank you. So each year, the district takes a series of steps to maintain our status as a Maintenance Assessment District, and this brings revenue to the district. The first step is adopting this resolution that will authorize the, the creation of the annual report. And then, in subsequent meetings, I'll bring back the report for review, and then we will authorize the levy of the annual assessment.
Unless there are any questions, can I motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2019/20-14 for the Maintenance Assessment District.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, just pushing right through this. Item 15B4, Acceptance of the 2018-19 Measure J Housing Bonds Audit Report, Ms. Van Rapporst.
Thank you. So I don't know if it's, we can take the next two together. They're both, they're both audit reports for our bonds. So we have a Measure J 2018, which is the housing bond, and a Measure J 2014, which is the general obligations bond. And the reports for both of these funds show that the auditors found no, they had no recommendations and they identified no areas of concern. And so these, these reports are just coming before the board tonight for your acceptance.
Awesome. Unless there's any questions or objections, we can have a motion to pass both.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is Consideration of Future Agenda Items.
I don't have any, but I did want to acknowledge that one of our retirees is Mr. George Curry, who's retiring after 30 or 31 years of service to the district as a world language teacher at Westmore High School. My son was one of his students for two years and really immensely enjoyed taking French with Mr. Curry. And so I just wish him luck, and I want to thank him on behalf of the entire board. Thank him for his service.
I should also add to that. Thank you for bringing it up, trustee Tahada. I had the pleasure of being one of Mr. Dr. Curry's students. He has, he knows like 10-plus languages. He's an amazing teacher. And I actually had the honor of taking the C best in that classroom when I was trying to become a teacher way back. So, yeah, it's, I decided to see that, you know, he's retiring, but I mean, he's, yeah, given a large chunk of his life dedicated to our district. And so just to honor that. Thank you, Dr. Curry. You know, thank you for bringing it up.
I would like to add to that. I had him as a teacher my sophomore year, and I have friendship with him. And I was really blessed to have him as a teacher. He was so sweet and so kind, and I was so blessed to have him as one of my professors during that year. Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Curry, for bringing us. We all miss you so much. So good luck in your next phase of life.
Yes, thank you. I had two items. One item is, I had emailed Dr. Deloria about the possibility. I don't know if it's here or if it could be on our Friday report of adding an ongoing item of just COVID-19 response. And one of the main things for me is just an advocacy. Now, just being asked on the status of different things, how many of our students still need laptops, how many haven't had, you know, are still waiting for connection, just things like that, that we can be updated on, whether it's just a standing item in the agenda that we could just view. It doesn't have to be reported on, or something that's in our ongoing report, I think just would be helpful in terms of the county calls that we're on, because this is being brought up by a lot by the city council members, just to have some information for them. And then in other advocacy work in talking to our state representatives and how they can help. And then the other item that I had was, we, we are changing our, our work study for the LCAP, but I'm wondering if the board would be interested in keeping that date and the new date, and that the original date for the LCAP, use that as a board work study to review board norms, because we still haven't finished the work on our, our, just our packet, our board packet, just to review that and to start that process so that it could be actually completed before the next school year. So if everyone still has that time available to keep that date to work on that.
That works.
I'm not going anywhere.
I'm just, I have so much on my, personal life is just packed right now.
Awesome. So just doing both of those things, unless anyone has anything else?
Just a clarification for Candace. You can actually do that meeting in person as long as you promise to do social distancing. Are you interested in doing it that way? Or did you want to do it through a Zoom meeting?
What's it like? I mean, going outside is so scary, you know?
Well, I'm technically.
It smells really clean in the building. It's getting.
I know, it'd be great.
All the time.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Are you? Are you okay with that, Kalima?
Yeah, because this is going on for longer than, than we intentionally thought. You know, my doctor is saying I can go outside, just not to limit it, but I need some, I need to go outside. At some point, I'm going to go crazy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also immunocompromised, but I think it'll be okay.
To be clear, you'll have to wear masks, okay? So if you don't have masks, you'll have to let Candace and me know. We'll make sure you get masks.
Okay, great.
So, for clarification, this Saturday is still a go?
This is.
April 18th. That's this Saturday.
I forgot.
Yeah, yeah.
And people want to meet in person for this, this Saturday?
We can, or if we can, if you want to do it by Zoom, if it's easier to do it by Zoom, we could just keep it a Zoom.
Maybe we can do both. Honestly, I wouldn't mind seeing you all in person, obviously, like just getting out of the house, all those things. But just to err on the side of caution, just, I feel like, even for me, trying to be mindful about limiting everything I do outside.
We could keep it Zoom.
I'm fine keeping it Zoom.
Okay.
This is actually.
Yeah, no problem. We could just do Zoom. And either if Jake can send us a link, or, yeah.
And what time? Nine to three still, or?
I'm fine with that. We can do 10.
I'm not going.
10 is good.
Let's do 10.
10 to 3?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yo, oh, and one more thing, I'm sorry. I'm still waiting to hear from everybody in regards to the May dates that I presented for the LCAP and Budget Work Study.
Either works for me.
I presented May 9th and May 16th.
You send those to the student trustees as well, Ms. Bell?
I will. I didn't, but I will. Okay.
I could do either one.
Okay.
Those are fine for me. I thought I responded, but.
You did.
Okay.
I've lost track, to be honest with you. It's like, what day is it?
It's a Saturday, of course.
I'm not even sure what it is. Come on.
Oh, today?
Sorry, that was muted.
Okay, so I guess whatever day works the best for the student trustees, because it seems like we're both, the board is fine with either one.
Okay.
Carla, is that okay for you?
Yeah, that's fine. Well, I would, I mean, well, can we do, only because my kids are restless, can we just do it nine, if we can do it earlier, that'd be great. I mean, I would, I liked, just because with the kids, I was going to suggest if on the May, I'm, I'm okay with those. I'm just putting it out there, just because sitting here for six hours kind of sucks. So we could like, do like, if we could break it up like, maybe like two times, and maybe on a weeknight, like, I can do like back-to-back, or just so, because I know the kids would probably be restless for myself. It'd be, you know, to sit out here and not have to deal with them, it'd be hard for me. But, you know, it's, I can accommodate. I'm just throwing it out there, so.
I can do it, too, if it's, if people are available for that.
But I know we like to kind of just get it all in one shot, too, and I'm okay with that. So I'm just, you know, seeing what the feeling is for that.
Actually, if we did a couple of evenings between LCAP and budget, that would be great for exec cabinet. They really need their weekend, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think Dr. Laura's breaking up, but I think she was saying if we could break it up between a couple of weeknights, have one, one LCAP, one budget, that would be fine.
And I just want to make sure that Corinne has the guidance she needs, because at several meetings this year, we talked about on this work study, looking at the more disaggregated data. I want to make sure that's still the case, so that she has the right direction. Okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, so one LCAP meeting, one budget meeting, and it can be, I guess.
Not, not a Saturday, not a weekend, but weekday nights.
Okay. Okay, then I'll be providing more date.
Thank you. Sorry for the extra work, Candace.
Thanks for the consideration. I really appreciate it, guys. And I'm okay with sitting here. I just worry about my children, like, coming in here, you know, at all times of days, you know, while I'm in here. So that's all.
Don't sit in budget. Fascinating.
Thank you so much. I really, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So I wanted to ask the student trustees, because they're sitting in front of a computer all day long. Are you going to be able to handle another three-hour meeting at night? I mean, you could do it on a Wednesday, I guess. No comments?
Possibly.
On a Wednesday, yeah. I think that could be fine.
I'm here for whatever you get.
Just, because it's out of the way of the other classes that I have. So Wednesday would be perfect.
It is a Wednesday.
Okay, so I wanted to spread it over two weeks. Have it on one Wednesday and then the following Wednesday.
Okay.
All right, cool. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Okay, unless there's anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good rest of the day.
Good evening.
Take care of yourself. Stay safe.